Call to order, the Board of Works meeting for March 13th, 10:11. Let's start with the request to advertise performance and energy savings contractor requests for qualifications.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
I have a memo random here from Brian Watkins regarding the performance and energy savings contract request for qualifications. He is requesting the advertisement of requests for qualifications related to performance and energy service companies that can fulfill the General City of Gary savings requirements under Indiana revised statute IC 36-1-12. The City of Gary soliciting such proposals to identify a provider that will assist the City of Gary to accomplish the following goals: reduce energy consumption, reduce operating costs, replace equipment that has exceeded its useful operating life, utilize renewable energy, alternative fuel options, and guarantee energy and operating savings. It's supposed to be going out on Monday, March 18th, and then would be returned by Monday, April 15th at 4:00 PM. So I make a motion to approve the request to advertise for energy savings contractors.
Second.
It's been moved as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Award of the NSP rehabilitation for 3619. It's been moving?
Yes. On February 27th, 2019, a bid was received from NSP Rehabilitation Work on the above referenced property at 3619 Van Buren Street. Accordingly, we are recommending that the following sole bidder be awarded the bid for the rehabilitation work at the indicated property. And it is for JMD Construction for $12,700. I make a motion to award the contract to JMD Construction.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Claims?
Yes. First, I have ratification of claims from March the 4th for Fund 791 Self Insurance Then I have approval of claims to be paid this Friday, March 15th. And the list of those claims are as follows: the general fund of $177,372.07. Then I have special revenues that total $127,564.92. And the special revenue funds are Fund 213 ESG Shelters of $796.76, Fund 223 Comp Court for $1,206.66, Fund 227 Law Enforcement Training of $200, Fund 231 Local Road and Streets of $5,145.20, Fund 232 Motor Vehicle Highway of $32,410.25, Fund 250 The Park Department $2,214.38, Fund 251 Park Athletics of $120, Fund 261 Community Development of $23,626.1 Cent, Fund 270 Media Fund of $250, Fund 710 Confiscated Fund of $600, Fund 792 which is the Workman's Comp Benefit of $53,491.16, Fund 823 Consolidated Area $50. And lastly, for special revenue, Fund 826 Lakefront Tiffa $7,450.50. Then I have Fund 212 Home Program for $15,187.95, Fund 224 is the Ambulance Non Reverting Fund of $17,066.93, Fund 279 Genesis Center Operating of $4,693.76, Fund 730 Police Pension of $12,000, Fund 815 is the Neighborhood Stabilization Program of $292.81. And lastly, Fund 848 Healthy Start of $5,216.88. Total claims to be paid this Friday of $359,395.32. I make a motion to approve the ratification and the approval of claims as presented.
A second.
It's been moved as second. Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Correspondence and agreements.
First, I have a contract from the IT Department, oh, I'm sorry, from the Gary Common Council for Data Mine Internet Marketing Solutions for Common Council. The Law Department has reviewed the attached contract with Data Mine Internet Marketing Solutions for the City of Gary Common Council. The contractor will update the council's website, providing programming and scripting for the legislative app suite. The work is already complete and contractor has submitted its invoice number 20228 dated January 29th, 2019, an amount of $500. It does have a term of contract from January 29th, 2019 until December 31st, 2019. There is also a memo here from President Brewer asking that the enclosed professional service contract for Data Mine Internet Marketing Solutions for the services rendered in the amount of $500 for programming and scripting updates to the Gary Common Council be approved and that the invoice and the QC 12 and QC 40s are attached. And reviewing those documents are here and that they have already been signed by the contractor and council member. So I will make a motion to approve and ratify this contract as presented.
A second.
Been moved as second. All in favor, any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence from the Police Department?
Yes. The first correspondence I have is a request to accept the settlement offer from State Farm Chief Allen respectfully requests the approval acceptance of the State Farm Insurance settlement regarding Unit 386. The vehicle, excuse me, a 2810 Ford Vic, I'm not going to read the VIN number, was totaled on September 19th, 2018. Per State Farm Insurance documentation attached, actual cash value of the 2810 Ford Vic was determined by the market age, value, and condition of the vehicle the time the loss occurred. The amount payable to settle the loss was determined as follows: cash value of $4,988, taxes of $349.16, title transfer of $24.50, total net payable of $5,361.66. Upon approval of said request, we ask that the monies be deposited in the Gary Police Auction Fund 254 to be used for the purchase of a replacement vehicle. The State Farm documentation is here, so I make a motion to accept the settlement as presented.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resignation notice?
Yes. Also, Chief Allen has submitted a request of notification for resignation of Patrolman, I'm not sure how to pronounce it.
Nakresha.
Nakresha Jones. We respectfully submit the resignation notice of Nakresha Jones. Officer Jones began her employment as a police officer for the City of Gary November 6th, 2013, totaling five years of service. She is resigning her position effective March 8th, 2019. Also included is a copy of her resignation letter, which is just saying that she is resigning her position. So I make a motion to accept the resignation of Patrolman Jones.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondent from, correspondence from IT?
Yes. This is for a contract with LiveWire. The Law Department has reviewed the enclosed contract with LiveWire to install and maintain telecommunication equipment for the City of Gary. The term of the contract is from January 30th, 2019 until January 29th, 2020. Contractor shall be paid a amount not to exceed $18,000. The contract is in proper legal form and is sufficient to adequately protect the interests of the City of Gary. In reviewing this, the scope of services agrees to what's in the memo. It does the contract term and compensation. The freeze committee and QC 12, QC 40 are here, and the contractor has already signed. So I make a motion to approve the contract with LiveWire.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence from Community Development?
Yes. This is regarding the contract for NSP 3 Waterproofing. The Law Department of Ingle Lewis Shannon has reviewed the attached NSP 3 Waterproofing contract between the City of Gary and JMD Construction. The contract is to, is for work to be completed within five days of the procedural work order at 3619 Van Buren Street. Pursuant to the contract, the contractor will not be paid an amount to exceed $12,700, sorry. The contract is in proper legal form and is sufficient to adequately protect the interests of Gary. Excuse me. The QC 12 and QC 40 are both here, as this is grant dollars, there's no freeze committee requirement. The amount of the contract is here, $12,700. And I know the contractor and community development have already signed this. So I make a motion to approve the JMD Construction contract as presented.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Are there any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those are the extra contracts. Thank you. What about the correspondence about Arlene signing for that property?
Yes, right here.
Oh, okay. And then the Comp Care contract?
I already have a copy of that.
I have one too.
Do I have a copy? I don't think I do. I don't have a copy.
You can see mine.
Okay. So we'll go through the rest of the things that are on agenda. We'll probably take a break so we can review the added contracts and then finish up. Correspondence from Public Works?
I'm not sure I have them in the right order, so I'm just going to read what I've got here, what I have. So the first one I have is a request for permit to install communications conduit and cable for MCI Metro/Verizon at Central Avenue and Colorado Street. MCI Metro has requested a permit to install conduit and cable at the subject location. This work is in part of a larger project to increase the MCI networks throughout the area. Traffic control plans have been submitted and are found to be acceptable. No closures are anticipated. The contractor will be Carlisle Utility Contractors. The work is to take place 10 days after permit approval and lasts for 10 working days. If the board approves, we recommend granting MCI a permit contingent upon the fee of $200 per the city's fee schedule paid. All requirements and the attached right-of-way permits shall be followed. MCI shall notify affected property and business owners, schools, police, fire, GPTC, and Public Works. So upon review of the permit to install the communications conduit at Central Avenue and Colorado Street, I make a motion to approve the permit contingent upon the three areas that were noted in the letter.
She made the motion.
A second.
It's been moved as second. I have a question. Is this going to require, because I couldn't tell, is this going to require, is this overhead installation, or are they going to have to dig?
This one is underground installation, so they will dig, usually like eight by eight bore pits, and then they bore from one pit to the other, usually as far as they can go without running into something. So usually it's a couple hundred feet between each pit.
And is it on paved roads or in?
It's on the side. Usually in, depending on what's there, it'll be in the grass or in the gravel.
Okay. And then I know that when a utility company normally disrupts pavement, we go behind and make sure that they have restored the road to where it should be?
Yes.
Do we do anything like that when it's not disrupting pavement?
Yeah, because there's still disruption from the bore pits that we want to make sure that they're properly restored.
And how soon after the work is done do we do that?
They let us know that they're done, and then we send someone from the Building Department out there. They'll ask me if they have any questions, but usually they can verify that it's been restored. Sometimes if it's grass, you know, we can't, the contractor can't restore it until the spring. So we'll just keep it on the list.
But do we have a set time that they're supposed to be deployed to check after, I mean, is it like three business days after we'll check, or do we know?
There's not a.
There's not a set time, okay. Okay, those are my questions. It's been moved as second. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I have a request for permit to install communication conduit and cable Windstream, Massachusetts Street from 40th Avenue to the alley north of Ridge Road. Windstream has requested permit to install communication conduit and cable at the subject location. This work is to provide fiber service for 3765 Broadway. Traffic control plans have been submitted and are found to be acceptable. The contractor will be JDH Construction. The work will begin upon permit approval and completed by May 17th, 2019. If the board approves, we recommend granting Windstream permit contingent upon. The fee shall be $200 per the city's fee schedule. All requirements and the attached right-of-way permit requirements shall be followed. Windstream shall notify all affected property and business owners, schools, police, fire, GPTC, and Board of Public Works. Upon reviewing the attachments here, I make a motion to approve the permit for the install of communication and conduit cable contingent upon the items listed in the request.
A second.
It's been moved as second. Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Permit to install communications conduit, 11th Avenue?
Yes. For, this is for MCI Metro/Verizon, 11th Avenue at Grand Street. MCI Metro has requested a permit to install conduit and cable at the subject location. This work is part of a larger project to increase the MCI networks throughout the area. Traffic control plans have been submitted and are found to be acceptable. No closures are anticipated. The contractor will be Carlisle Utility Contractors. The work is to take place 10 days after permit approval and lasts for 10 working days. If the board approves, we recommend granting MCI permit contingent upon. The fee shall be $200 for the city's schedule of fees. All requirements and the right-of-way permit requirements shall be followed. MCI shall notify affected property owner, property and business owners, schools, police, fire, GPTC, and Board of Public Works. The documentation is also here showing the work area. So I make a motion to approve the permit for 11th and Grant Street contingent upon the items in the request.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Any questions?
No. Aye.
Next, I have a request for permit to install CATV cable for GSD/Army Corps of Engineers,
Grimmer Construction, Ambridge Neighborhood. Grimmer Construction has requested intermittent road closures at the subject location. This work is for the rehabilitation of sanitary sewers for GSD and funded by the Army Corps of Engineers. Traffic control plans have been submitted and are found to be acceptable. The work is expected to last through October, 2019. If the board approves, we recommend granting Comcast a permit contingent upon. There is no fee for the GSD project. All requirements and the attached right-of-way permit requirements shall be followed. Grimmer shall notify affected property owners, schools, police, fire, GPTC, and Board of Public Works 10 days in advance of any closures or detour changes. I'm going to make a motion to approve this permit contingent upon the items noted in the letter.
A second.
It's been moved as second. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. They're talking, the letter talks about granting Comcast the permit, and yet it's Grimmer Construction, so I'm just wondering who the permit is actually going to?
That's right, well.
Okay.
The Comcast is a separate permit.
Okay. So it's Grimmer Construction that's asking for the permit? Can I make a motion to amend my motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion then to award the permit to Grimmer Construction contingent upon the items in the letter.
A second.
It's been moved as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have one more, which is the request for permit to install CATV cable Comcast at 8th Avenue and the alley north of 8th and west of Broadway. Comcast has requested a permit to install conduit and cable at the subject location. This work is for service to 792 Broadway. Traffic control plans have been submitted and are found to be acceptable. No closures are anticipated. The contractor will be, per tonal, the work is to take place 10 days after permit approval and lasts for 10 working days. If the board approves, we recommend granting Comcast a permit contingent upon. The fee shall be $200 per the city's schedule. All requirements and the attached right-of-way permit requirements shall be followed, and Comcast shall notify affected property owner, property owner, schools, police, fire, GPTC, and Board of Public Works. All the documentation that is just mentioned is listed here. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the permit with the contingent she's noted in the letter.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Any questions?
One, who is, is it Comcast getting the permit?
Yeah, I.
It says the contractor could be a different company.
Yeah, I prefer to grant the permit to the utility so they can be held accountable. But it's actually the contractor that will come in and pay the fee, and they'll register with the Building Department.
Can we do that, though? Can we permit, I mean, help me understand, if we grant the contract, if we grant the permit to Comcast, are we not allowing ourselves to ensure whatever requirements we have for a contractor before we issue a permit to them? For instance, if Pretano wasn't licensed in the city, but we're granting the permit to Comcast, we're removing our ability to make that check. Is that right?
It says in the requirements that are attached to the letter that the contractors have to be licensed. So when the board approves and I notify the petitioner that it's been approved, I always copy the Building Department so that they can make sure that the contractor is registered. The ordinance is not clear on what the perma-te is. The ordinance just says that anyone wishing to cut the street has to get a permit. So if the board wants to direct me to write the letters to the contractor instead of the utility, I'd be fine with that.
Could we do both?
That's what I was thinking.
Makes sense.
I could start doing that, for sure.
Do we want to amend this one?
Sounds like we should.
If we could move to amend it to do both?
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to amend my prior motion in that we grant the permit to both Comcast and the contra Pretano, subject to the items outlined in the letter.
A second.
It's been moved as second. Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Close your ears, I'm sorry, all right.
Do you want to take a break now?
So I'm going to take a brief recess so that we can consider some additional contracts that will be before us. We should return in less than 10 minutes. I am restarting, am I ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. I am restarting, bringing out of recess the meeting of the Board of Works, same date, March 13th, restarting at 10:53.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to add three items to the agenda, the first one being the Comprehensive Care Contract for the Human Resource Department. Then I would like to make a motion to add the Resolution 2019-2 for Community Development to be able to sign some real estate closing documents. And then lastly, to amend the contract with Volt Advisors LLC.
A second.
It's been moved as second. Any questions about the agenda change?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if we can start with the Comprehensive Care.
Yes. The Law Department has reviewed the enclosed contract with Comprehensive Care, Inc., and Comprehensive Physical Therapy for the city's Occupational Health and Medicine Program, including treatment for on-the-job injuries, accidents, as well as employment and random drug screening. Term of the contract is from January 1 until December 31st, 2019. The contractor shall not be paid an amount not to exceed $40,000. The contract is in proper legal form and is sufficient to adequately protect the interests of the City of Gary. In reviewing the contract, the scope of work agrees to the memo, as does the compensation of $40,000, and the ending date of December 31st, 2019. I know the QC 12, QC 40 are attached along with the contract being signed by the contractor. I make a motion to approve the Comprehensive Care Contract as presented.
It's been moved as second. Are there any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Okay. The Resolution for Community Development?
Yes. Next, I have a Resolution 2019-2 to allow Arlene Colvin to sign real estate closing documents. The Law Department has reviewed the attached Resolution 2019-2 to allow Arlene Colvin to sign real estate closing documents for the sale of property located at 600 East 35th Avenue, Gary. The title company has requested the Board of Works to adopt a resolution authorizing Ms. Colvin to sign real estate documents on behalf of the city. The property is scheduled to close on Monday, March 18th. The resolution is in proper legal form and is sufficient to adequately protect the interests of the City of Gary. So that's just what this is, is authorizing Ms. Colvin to sign the real estate documents for the sale of the property at 600 East 35th Avenue. I make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
A second.
It's been moved as second. Are there any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Volt contract?
Yes. Lastly, I have an amended contract with Volt Advisors LLC. The Law Department has reviewed the attached amended contract with the city, with the city and Volt Advisors LLC for economic and community development services, including consulting services in the areas of planning, zoning affairs, and strategic planning. The parties previously had a contract for these same services, the term of which ran from March 1st, 2018 until March 1st, 2019. The parties later decided to agree to a one-year contract that runs from January 1, 2019 until December 31st, 2019. Compensation to the contractor shall not exceed $315,000, of which the city will contribute $90,000, and redevelopment will contribute $215,000. The parties entered into a revised scope of services agreement that is marked as Exhibit 1. The previous contract has already been approved by Border Works, and the contract included a financial funding form. Therefore, no financial funding form is necessary for this amended contract. Contract is in proper legal form and is sufficient to adequately protect the interests of the City of Gary. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to amend the contract between the city and Volt Advisors.
A second.
It's been moved as second. Are there questions?
Yes. I, two questions, actually, the math doesn't appear to add up to what the city will pay versus what redevelopment will pay. So I wanted to double-check that in here with the contract. And also, if, if our attorney, Thomas, could explain the changes in the contract?
If you don't mind, I'll explain the changes.
Okay, sure.
Okay. The first thing, as it relates to your first question, you are right. The city is still going to contribute $90,000, as discussed before. The redevelopment portion is $225,000.
Yes.
I also make another correction. The prior contract, the term of the prior contract went through March 2021 and not 2019.
Yeah, that is in the contract recovery notes.
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to explain the changes?
I sure will.
Thank you.
So there's a couple of things that we are changing as it relates to the contract. Last year, the Board of Works approved a contract that included services like interim director of commerce, the lead on a comprehensive plan, some work in the arena of economic development, and those services started last year with two people dedicating. with two people dedicated and some ancillary coverage from Volt Advisors. We have changed the scope of work that we want, want Volt to do and would like to limit the term to just this current year because as those projects sunset, we believe most of them will sunset in nineteen. In addition, we also intend or are hopeful that we can have permanent replacements for these interim roles by the end of nineteen, if not sooner. So, this contract's scope reflects that change, and the term also reflects that change. Any other questions?
No, that makes sense. I would however like to amend my motion. I'd like to amend my motion to state that, that we approve the contract amendment with Volt Advisors LLC with stipulation that the attached memo is corrected for what's in the contract.
Second.
It's been moved a second. Any questions about the amendment?
No.
No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we voted on the amendment. Do I also need to vote on the contract itself?
That, that is the amendment.
No, I'm saying your amendment, you made an amendment. Okay. So, that, we just need the one vote?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think that's it.
I have no new business?
Any unfinished business?
No, we don't have any.
Any public comments? Seeing none? Can I get a motion to close out the meeting for today?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Adjourned as of eleven o'clock. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.